I put the napkin on your water so that it's nice to get out of doggy.
Four, alright, okay, now more.
You guys ready?
Yep.
Okay, would you call the row please?
Robert Kraus, Jason Blair.
Here.
Scott Singer.
Here.
Terry Cavanagh.
Here.
David Roberts. Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C is proclamation declaring May 12th through the 19th National Police Week. And, excuse me, I'm still trying to find it. Whereas National Police Week is to honor the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas some 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in 16,000 injuries and there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in the communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Moore Police Department. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, over 19,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty, including one member of the Moore Police Department. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC and 321 names of fallen heroes are added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this year, including 152 officers killed in 2012. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 26th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 15th, 2013. Whereas, May 15th is dedicated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families to further remember their contributions, ask of all city flags to be flown at half-staff for the day. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Glenn Lewis, Mayor of the City of Moore, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12th through May 18th, 2013, as National Police Week. In the City of Moore, I urge all citizens to publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. And I would just like to add, thank you to all the council that are here. Thank you, sir, for coming again.
Very excited.
Thank you.
If I could just let forward on everybody's, uh, area is there, if you get a chance, just kind of give you some highlights of Police Week. It's gonna kick off Sunday at Walmart, where they staggered some vehicles and we're gonna, I guess, display our new child ID kits we got from Grant, uh, in the mall, near the market. And then, of course, Wednesday we'll have the memorial service over at the library at four o'clock. And then Saturday we'll kind of wind it down with a kid bicycle safety fair at the community center. So, it's open to everybody and just please, uh, take a look at what you have in there when you get a chance and thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you guys. Item two is a consent document. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held April 15th, 2013. Item B is receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held March 12th, 2013. Item C is renew the contract with the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, ACOG, to provide transportation planning activities as identified in the 2013 United Planning Work Program. Item D is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2012, 2013 in the amount of $2,227,773.05.
Make a motion to approve?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item number three is consider Moore Vision 2020 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 38, located in the southwest quarter of Section 36 Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of Southwest 34th Street and west of Broadway Avenue, rural residential to urban residential low density. Application by Shaw's Investment Group Incorporated. Planning Commission recommended denial of this project, 8-0.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Items number three and four on your agenda are companion items, so I will be discussing them, uh, together. This item, or these, both these items came before you on April 1st and, uh, was tabled from that meeting to, to this meeting. Uh, so this is really the second time that you've seen these items. Um, I'm just gonna go briefly over, uh, some of the main points from these, uh, from these items, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask. Uh, this property was currently zoned, is currently zoned R1. Uh, it was preliminary platted with the Apple Valley Edition in 2000 as acreage lots, and, uh, it was shown on the Moore Vision 2020 as rural residential land use. And that was a decision that was based on, uh, the approved preliminary plat and the, uh, fact that sewer at that time was unavailable in the area. In 2011, the applicant applied to increase the densities from the approved 24 lots, uh, that was approved with the final plat of Apple Estates, Section 3, uh, to first 85 patio home lots, uh, which was then, uh, withdrawn, and finally to 68 single-family lots, which was considered by city council, and that application was denied. Uh, the applicant is now again requesting to increase the densities of this property from the approved 24 lots to 76 single-family lots. Uh, while the current R1 zoning district does allow this increase in densities, the land use plan must be amended from rural residential land use to low-density residential land use. Uh, and the applicant must submit a new preliminary plat for the Apple Valley Edition, Section 9. Uh, we do have that, uh, preliminary plat, and, of course, now what we're considering is the amendment, or, yes, the amendment to the Moore Vision 2020 and the preliminary plat for Apple Valley Edition, Section 9. Uh, the issue surrounding this request is one of appropriate densities given the character of the area. Uh, the Moore Vision 2020 does designate the property to the west, south, and east as rural residential. The comprehensive plan encourages transitional buffers to protect the rural residential properties from any adverse effects from higher densities. Uh, this particular application does include an open space and drainage way as a transition to the lower-density developments to the west. Uh, that, this could be considered an appropriate buffer. However, there is no transition or buffer to the south or east. Part of the density discussion centers around the increase in traffic along the local residential roads. Um, although the subdivision provides two points of entry from local residential roads, both points of entry originate and terminate from one existing intersection of Baldwin Avenue and Manhattan Way. Uh, the proposed plat shows a roundabout that is to be constructed at this intersection as a traffic calming device. With the increase in the proposed housing units on the subject property, a higher concentration of traffic, uh, will be funneled to this intersection. Uh, this intersection is adjacent to an existing city park and the proposed parkland within this development under consideration. It should be noted that the plat does not meet the intent of the subdivision access ordinance by designing a neighborhood of 76 homes with effectively one point of access. Uh, this does create concerns for emerg- emergency management accessibility. Um, as proposed, this application will increase traffic within the existing Apple Valley neighborhood. Uh, the immediate streets that would carry the traffic are the local residential streets of Baldwin and Manhattan, both of which are adjacent to existing and proposed parkland. Staff recommends careful thought and consideration, uh, to be given to this situation as the safety of the park users should be, uh, paramount. Staff also has additional concerns about the provisions for pedestrian safety and aesthetic treatment of the center median of the proposed roundabout. Along with the ownership and maintenance of the roundabout, um, none of these considerations were addressed by the plat under consideration. Because of the significant increase in densities without consideration of the adopted Moore Vision 2020, staff does recommend denial of this application. The applicant has not made substantial material changes to its application since the city council's August 2011 denial of the previous application for 68 lots. That denial was not effectively appealed by the applicant and should prevent the applicant from submitting a similar proposal absent any substantial or material changes to address the city's council's objections, uh, from the 2011, uh, meeting. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them at this time.
Mayor, this is in my, my area, and I have a question for you. Do we even need to hear this again?
It's up to you. So, I don't, I don't know what the, what the difference is.
I would suggest you hear it.
Yeah.
Um, 'cause they have resubmitted it and, and let them see if they can, um, make a case to you all that there is significant, uh, change in the, the application.
I don't know what the changes are, so I haven't heard them.
I got you. Alright, thanks.
Um, Mayor Brent Johnson is the attorney who represented us whenever this case was, uh, appealed to District Court after, um, the council's denial in 2011. I just want him to come up and give you a brief history of that, and then he'll be available and answering the questions as far as the previous case or what could happen going forward.
Yes, my name is Brent Johnson. Uh, we did represent the city in, uh, basically the appeal filed, filed by Shaw's. It was not filed as a true appeal, it was filed as a, a, uh, for rid of mandamus. Basically, they were asking the court to require the city to, to approve the prior applications because the city didn't have the discretion, uh, to deny those applications. Uh, in response to, to the lawsuit that they filed, we filed a motion for summary judgment to establish to the court that you did have the discretion to deny the prior applications because there was no transitional buffer to the south and east, it didn't comply with the comp plan. Uh, it also didn't comply with the south subdivision regulations and/or the, the zoning ordinances. We also argued that, that they had a plain and adequate appeal right, which they did not pursue, uh, instead of a mandamus action, and that they should be stopped from pursuing the applications and developing as requested based on representations they made to landowners buying in the development. Those were the grounds that we argued that, that the city was entitled to summary judgment before the District Court. In response to our motion for summary judgment, the lawsuit was dismissed by Shaw's, then they filed the applications that are before you tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to-
So, the court never ruled on?
Correct.
So, we, you recommend that we listen to all sides today, then vote again on this issue?
Correct. And one of the issues, I think, before you is obviously the, the merits of the applications, uh, but also to determine whether there's a substantial material change that, that warrants you looking at these applications again. Uh, there's certainly an argument to be made that if there were not, there are not substantial material changes from the prior applications, then they should be denied because of the prior denial.
Well, the builder's here, I would love to hear what the changes are.
Good evening, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Chris Anderson with SMC Consultants. We're, we're back here today on the plat for Apple Valley, Section 9, and part of the reason that we're back is because our previous plat had deficiencies. We hired a new engineer to come in, look at the plat, and based on his findings that he'll tell you about, we made substantial material changes to this plat. What you see here and what you have in the packet, did everybody get a, a copy of the packet? The, the first page you see is Exhibit 1, and this is a, a copy of our, our new plat. And as you can see, we now have internal circulation within the plat, we now have two points of access, we now have a roundabout, and more importantly, we meet every regulation within the City of Moore's subdivision regulations for R1. So what that means is, we now, unlike previously, meet all regulations that the City of Moore has for R1 zoning. And that's important because this application is for a plat and a comp plan change. Now, we disagree with staff's position that the comp plan has to change when you have your correct zoning, and that's what we have. We have our legally vested R1 zoning rights. And I think it's important to look at what the Moore Vision 2020 says when you look at a plat, or, excuse me, when you look at the relationship between the comp plan and the zoning. Chapter 4, subsection A, says, "The land use plan is closely related to the city zoning ordinance. Both provide guidance on how land should be used." The zoning ordinance is much more detailed than its guidance. It is a legal document. So the plan is a guide and it's a tool. Zoning is a legal right that property owners have, and so the plat that is now before the city council is meeting all of the requirements that the legal R1 zoning requires.
Sir, can you go, can you go back real quick, sir? I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Um, okay, so there's a car accident at Baldwin in Manhattan. That intersection is now shut down. How do people or emergency vehicles get into the neighborhood?
Well, because of the roundabout, if there was an accident at Baldwin and Manhattan, there's still a means of access on the other side of the roundabout.
Well, how, how does a roundabout work? You have to kind of help me out here.
How does a roundabout work?
Yes, sir.
If you were coming from south, you would approach and you could turn like this, or you could go around the circle and hit Baldwin. Same thing here, if you're coming from the west, you would come, if you wanted to access Baldwin, you'd go around and up, or if you wanted to go there, you'd go down and over.
So, traffic goes clockwise?
Yes.
Okay, so there's an accident again at Baldwin in Manhattan, traffic goes clockwise. Where does traffic now go?
It goes counterclockwise.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, so there's an accident again on the counterclockwise side, how does traffic now enter the neighborhood? To, I, I'm being honest with you, I, I see one point of entrance.
Well, and I'll let Mr. Anderson address that, this is actually, uh, at least in our opinion, safer than what the subregs allow. The subregs would allow you one means of access with a divided median on a lot count similar to this, and by having essentially two means of access with the roundabout-
Again, you, you haven't explained to me how there's two points of access, though. To me, I see one point. I know, I know you're saying that there're two, there're two rows that hit that, that roundabout, but it's one roundabout.
But to, to our plat, there's two means of access. And that's pursuant to your R1-
But how? I, I see one point, I see an intersection, a, a roundabout.
I'm gonna let Mr. Anderson address the traffic issue now.
Okay, go ahead.
Just to point out, the original design had a single entry, which was Baldwin, just Baldwin, uh, going into subdivision, had a emergency access, you know, that same intersection I'm getting there. I was tasked with looking at the original plat and asking if it met the R1 subdivision regulations for the R1. As I went through the regulations, I didn't think this configuration met subdivision regulations. Also had an issue with the length of the cul-de-sac, especially this number of lots on the cul-de-sac. And if I were to issue that, I'd have to be, um, subdivision regulations. Now, I was asked to come up with a layout that met the R1 subdivision regulations. This is the layout that I came up with, just if you have one intersection here, if you have two access points into subdivision going through different intersections.
Okay, so there's, so there's one intersection to get into the whole neighborhood?
There is one intersection.
Okay.
Two entrances, one intersection. We took care of the length of the cul-de-sac by dividing the internal, also, I just took care of the length of the cul-de-sac issue by better emergency access and circulation in the subdivision. Your question about the one intersection, I wondered about that too, and I was first looking at that, wondering if that met the intent of the code. I mean, it was common in the staff report that said this met the letter of the code, but not necessarily the intent. And so I went through the subdivision regulations again, and this is Section 12-558, under the subdivision access standards. R B addresses 31 to 100 lots, which is what this subdivision is. One of the options, as David mentioned, is a single entrance into an addition, maybe constructed with a divided median or with driving lanes on both sides maintaining a minimum paving width of 20 feet. What that's saying, we could take away this one entry, have a divided street right here with two 20-foot lanes, and that would meet the letter and intent of the Moore subdivision regulations. So, to me, it would be very unreasonable to come back and say, well, if the two single 20-foot lanes meets the intent of the subdivision regulations, it would be hard to argue that two full-size six streets coming from that same point does not meet the intent.
Okay, well, so, but, but again, traffic goes counterclockwise on a roundabout, correct? So you're saying that-
Yeah, the circulation.
So you're saying that traffic would have to go against the roundabout?
In an emergency situation, if there was an accident right here blocking that lane, what would traffic with emergency vehicles take this, uh, uh, go, go the opposite direction around the circle to get into the subdivision?
And so, you're gonna have traffic going in and out of the same lane, basically?
In an emergency situation, yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
So, if we look at 1A, which is the original plat until it was filed, we've made substantial changes, and most of those do with meeting the subdivision regulations. We now have met every subdivision regulation that the City of Moore had. So, looking back at the, the history of this site, part of the reason this was designated as rural back when the comp plan came about was because, at the time, the City of Moore did not allow lift stations. Due to topography, what that meant was this section could not be sewered. Fast forward to now, City of Moore allows lift stations, therefore sewer can get here, and so the densities that we're asking for now meet the density that was zoned for back in 2000. Nothing's changed on the density is allowed within R1 zoning. There are a few issues within the staff report that I'd like to address. Um, as I mentioned, staff suggests that because the comp plan is different from our zoning, that must change in order for plat, and, and we disagree. We have a legally vested zoning right that is R1, and we meet all the, all the regulations that the City of Moore requires for an R1 piece of property. We feel that when you meet all of the regulations that a city has pursuant to your zoning right, you should be able to develop that property accordingly. One of the issues addressed in the staff report is light and noise trespass, and I'm showing you Exhibit, Exhibit 2, it is an area, and it shows this, uh, this is an area where there's residential, um, all over the place, and in most cases, we're less dense than everything around us, so we're not sure what light and, uh, noise trespass will be created. That is typically associated with industrial or commercial zone. We certainly would not be providing any light or noise trespass that, uh, isn't already present, if that is a concern. There was a comment about there's no buffer to the south and to, to the east, and if you look at other plats in the area, that's consistent with other plats previously approved. Uh, in some instances, there's no buffer on one side, some instances, there's no buffer on multiple sides, so our plat is simply a furtherance of what other plats have been approved. Mr. Anderson addressed the roundabout and addressed the issue of, staff has said we meet the letter of the code, but not the intent, and we have a hard time understanding what that means. I think any developer can only be required to meet what the regulations are, and if you meet all the regulations, I'm not sure how you can look into what an intent may have been. All we can go by are what the regulations say, and we've met all of those. Now, the increase in traffic, there's no increase from when this was zoned in 2000. When it was zoned in 2000, certain densities were allowed, and these densities are right in line with what we're asking for today. So, it's the same densities that could have been contemplated back in 2000. And, and finally, there was a comment about incompatible densities. Now, I think it's important to look at, in totality, all the developments surrounding. And when you add up all the developments, it's right around 183 acres, not including R26. And what Mr. Anderson did is went through and looked at all the various plats that have been approved over the last several years in the 183 acres adjoining ours. And what we found is, 137.14 of those acres are more dense than what we're asking for. The acres that are less dense are the acres right here, and the reason those are less dense is because at the time, they couldn't get sewer. And as we already addressed, now they're sewer. So, to say that we're, we have incompatible densities, uh, I think is inaccurate. In fact, we're, we're less dense than well over the majority of the acreage that's already out there. So, in our opinion, our, our plat certainly meets the subdivision regulations, we think both the letter of the law and the intent. We think our, our plat that, uh, had some problems, we now have a plat that meets every single R1 regulation, and that represents a substantial material change to what was before the council last time. And we believe when you meet all the regulations that you should be able to develop your land accordingly. And we would ask for your approval, and we're here to answer any questions.
When the, I have one, when the development was first proposed for, I understand that it was a lower density because of the sewer issue, was there ever any, uh, exclamation or forethought that, you know, that may come and we may be able to, um, you know, have the lift stations there and then we could, you know, have the, what it is that you're wanting now? So I guess the people that, that bought out there were under the impression that it was not going to be what it is being proposed as now, so-
There was a plat on file, and the, the plat was an older plat, and I believe that some people saw the plat and believed that that was gonna be developed. Um, plats are, are subject to change, but the zoning hasn't changed. And so, I think everyone that bought was at least on notice as to what the property was zoned, and if you look at the Moore code and the Moore subdivision regulations, you can calculate what R1 zoning could mean, um, based on the acreage that we have. So, we think it was certainly feasible that this plat could change and circumstances change. I think at the time, other cities were already allowing lift stations, so I believe that there was a, a pause to allow this to remain undeveloped so that if a lift station- So, I believe that there was a, a pause to allow this to remain undeveloped, so that if a lift station did come, they could go back in with densities that matched the zones.
So, do you have sales reps that understand fully what was planned for this area?
Do I have sales reps?
Yeah, are there sales reps for Home Creations, do they have a full understanding of what was being planned in this area?
Uh, I believe that Home Creations does have sales reps, and I do not believe that they have a full understanding of the business plan and the business models that the owners have.
So you have sales reps for Home Creations that are selling homes that don't know what's proposed and planned?
I, I'm saying that Home Creations likely has a salesperson that does not know the full design and build-out plans of Home Creations. They own a substantial amount of real estate in various cities, so I'm, I'm guessing no, that the sales reps don't know every plan that the owner has.
So if a sales rep is working in this area and is making promises to, to people buying homes in this area, should, should they not know and understand what's going to be happening in this neighborhood?
Well, uh, there's been allegations of, of promises made, and there, we were told that somebody saw a map on a wall, and.
Well, I was still.
I don't, I don't know that there was any promises set in a contract that this is what will be built. Plats are subject to change.
So it's not written down in a contract, okay, I got you.
We actually sat here, I, I remember this, 'cause I, I've been mayor for a long time, and the two applicants actually came up and told us that that was gonna be a gated, bladed area.
Yep.
And I was not involved at the time, I can, you know, only tell you what my knowledge is since I've become.
But I, I'm just telling you, it wasn't just a picture on the wall somewhere.
Well, and, and that's what I want to say, you know, I've had, I've had a lot of dealings with home builders, I've been a councilman since the mid-nineties. Some of them very, we have some very good home builders in this area, very good. And I've had some very bad dealings, you know, um, you know, there's a time when home builders ran this town a long time ago. But, you know, citizens have a right, you know, to, to have the city built the way they want. And we're elected to represent the citizens of this town, and I, I truly believe that the citizens have a right to speak about their neighborhoods and how it's built. And, um, I, I think there was a lot of, you know, misinformation here. You know, I think, you know, 'cause to me, when a home, when someone buys a brand-new home, a lot of people buy a brand-new home with the idea that they're gonna stay in the direction of their lives, it's gonna be a retirement home. This is a big deal, you know, and, and when certain promises and, and things are made to, to entice them to, to buy a home, I expect those people to follow up on those promises, you know, and I'm not, not making any accusations or saying anything, you know, in particular, I'm just saying that, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, there have been some promises that weren't, you know, followed through here to some of the citizens. And I, I have feeling some of them are probably here today to speak, so.
And like I said, I don't know anything about any promises.
Obviously.
Sorry?
No, I'm sorry.
I said I don't know anything about any promises, all I know is that when a property owner owns a piece of property and it's zoned correctly, they should be able to develop it in the manner that the subdivision regulations for the city of Moore prescribe.
So buyer beware.
I think that's implicit in any, any sales agreement that any buyer goes into.
All you have to say, that's all, that's all I need to know.
Okay, we, we have several citizens that would like to speak on this issue. Uh, Linda Williams, thank you, sir.
I sent you all an email last week, now you can put a face to that long email. 'Cause I, I laid it all out, I told you what was going on, I, I explained that when I bought my house, oh, I should tell you, I'm at forty-five hundred Baldwin.
Okay, and what, what is your name?
Linda Williams.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I live at forty-five hundred Baldwin.
Yes, I got your email.
I'm just to the north, okay? And let me, I, I wrote a couple of notes while this gentleman was speaking. One regarding a buffer, that there is no buffer to the west and to the south, okay? There isn't one to the north either, other, my house, other than the street Baldwin. You know, there, there's nothing, okay? Another one I want to address, and that was regarding the intersection and the fact that, that it's one intersection, okay? Besides all that, it's not dumping into a collector's street. The nearest collector's street would be, let's see, it'd be Central Park or Manhattan. And by the way, when we keep saying Manhattan and Baldwin, those two don't intersect, it's actually Melrose, okay? That, that intersection where the roundabout is, that's actually Melrose and Baldwin, okay? You see it on there? I can show you.
Yeah, where, where's that?
This is my house right here.
Okay.
This is my neighbor, she thinks it's a restaurant, I think so, okay? This is the empty lot here. As far as buffering, there's a fence here, and these, this is Apple Gardens, and they come down here and dump out onto a collector, onto Central Park. Okay, they don't touch anything else, they go into a collector's street. But, right here, and it is, it does say Manhattan, wait, but it's not, it's Melrose.
Okay, so that's incorrect, okay.
This corner right here, this is Apple State Road, this is Melrose, this is Baldwin. But what I'm saying is you would have to come through this intersection, now Melrose, to Forty-second, in turn to get to Central Park, or go down Manhattan to get to a collector, okay? Um, collector meaning a lighter street, so they're supposed to go to the. Or, and I know this, because this is the way I drive, and here, in my house, I go down here, I go very slowly, 'cause I know there's kids out there. But there's no collector all the way out to Eastern, and there's a lot of houses, and these are the, the big, nice homes that we hoped and were taught to be those. Okay? What else did I say? Oh, yes, there was talk of the density and all of the new subdivisions that have been approved, and I'm assuming they're talking about, um, Village Three, Apple Village Three, up at the corner of Eastern and Thirty-Fourth, and also, um, Apple Landing, okay? And yes, they are more dense, but they dump right out onto a main street. You know, they, they don't pump through one intersection and then go a great distance to get to a collector. I didn't mean to get into all of this, I really didn't, but I live there, I, yeah, I like my house. I'm the one that had the map on the wall when I signed the papers, there was the map. You know, I took a picture of it because I was living in Iowa at the time, and I wanted to go back up to Iowa and dream, you know? This is what I bought, yay, what I'm gonna move into, I'm retiring, this is where I'm going to live. So I took that picture, I'm so grateful I did, because it's proof that I'm not just making this up, it was really there. Also, I, and I shared with you the email convers- conversations I had with the sales lady, who is a friend of mine. That woman told me what she knew to be the absolute truth at the time. And I bet, I think I even quoted my scrapbook pages to you, because I journaled through this whole thing. Anyway, I know I only have five minutes, I'm Linda Williams, please don't reveal this, please don't. That's all I can say, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Phil Watts.
Ladies and gentlemen, Phil Watts, um, I'm a lawyer, uh, and I promise to be brief, so factor that in. I, I think I can keep my promise here, okay? Uh, thank you so much for letting me speak, uh, tonight. Uh, I've had the privilege of representing the Haney family, uh, here in Moore for many, many years. And I can tell you that, that the Haney family, specifically the, uh, the Jean Haney, Haney Revocable Family Trust, bought some land, uh, back in two thousand, that is immediately contiguous, uh, or contiguous and immediately east of the proposed land that, that, that is proposed to be developed. And I can tell you in, in, in terms of kind of here, hearing what was Ms. Williams said earlier, and what I've heard here tonight, and what I, what I've read in previous minutes, I can assure you that my clients did their homework with respect to what the, uh, the developments around, around the land that they planned to develop for their family, uh, what, what its basic purpose was. Uh, and I will, I just have basically three points to make, and then I'll sit down and shut up. Uh, point nu- number one, and I'll tell you, my caveat on this is, is I'm from Durant, born and raised, so I have to look at things very, very simply. And, and I will tell you that one intersection into a neighbor, neighborhood is one intersection into a neighborhood, any way you cut it. You got an issue with respect to ingress and egress, and all the talk in the world ain't gonna fix it. Uh, issue number two, and my, my observations are from Commissioner Snow's comments, uh, back in, back from the March, I believe it was March twelfth, uh, city council meeting. And the purpose of this is just to assist any way I can with respect to, uh, your analysis of the quote, "material substantial change." There's some things that cannot materially and substantially change. Commissioner So says, Snow says, quote, "Specifically, if you look at the placement of the park," and I want to emphasize the park, I saw it today. Uh, "And where it is situated in relo- in relation to the proposed increase in traffic, it is obvious that high density was not an end goal." You cannot go back and put the smoke back in the cigarette with respect to what the goal was, uh, with respect to the initial development. It was not proposed to be a high-density development. It's that short and it's that simple, and you can't change it today. And then thirdly, uh, I said earlier, I'm from Durant, there's a very famous Oklahoma Supreme Court case that's called the, called Melton versus the City of Durant. Uh, and the lessons learned in the Oklahoma, in the Oklahoma Supreme Court case of Melton versus the City of Durant is that, uh, the interpretation of regulations and decisions with respect to non-compliance with applicable ordinances is clearly within the, the sound discretion of the city council. It's, it's up to you. And on behalf of my clients and all the other, uh, contiguous and area property owners, I encourage you to take a look again at what the original plan was, and ask if whether or not what is, what is being proposed today is consistent with those promises that were made. And if you allow your, your decision to be guided by that, I think you'll continue to deny the applications. And I have every confidence in the world that, that, that the district court litigation will be re-initiated, and we'll see what happens there. So far, so good, thank you.
Tony Legree.
Good evening, my name is Tony Legree, four five one five Apple Estate Way. Take a look at this map. I have this house here with a pool, a nice retirement home. I am a disabled veteran, served twenty-nine years in United States military. And when my wife and I made a decision to build a retirement home, we looked at four primary areas. Edmund, Yukon, Norman, and Moore. After months and months of looking and researching, we decided on this plat of land off of Apple Estate Road for two reasons. Number one, it's a great location. It's a great environment to raise a family. It's calm, slow pace of life, uh, there's no crime that we know of. There's not a lot of high-flow traffic, and it seems like a, a nice, uh, a nice way to kind of spend my retirement years from some of the most egregious things I've seen being deployed. The second reason was of the low density that we were promised. Now, these adjacent twenty-six acres across from my property, we were told as a selling point, there were gonna be twenty-four estate homes. Not patio homes, estate homes. I invested a ton of money into my property. Now, if we put seventy-six homes down here, what's that gonna do to the value of my property? It's certainly not gonna go up, and that's a concern for me. And I have every intent of staying where I'm at, uh, provided this thing is denied. However, to me, when, when you're in combat, and you've got the person to your right and to your left promising to take care of you, or promising a promise to fulfill a promise, you, your life is relying on that person to follow through. So when we made a decision to purchase this land, this one acre of beautiful land overlooked in the Greenbelt Park, it's a great space. We did it because we knew that the other homes going in the area were gonna be of like type. For me, it's all of a sense of community. The military is a big sense of community. It's not the brick and mortar in which we live. We all have houses, we all make house payments. It's about the other intrinsic things that shape the neighborhood. It's called integrity in the process, and integrity in the system. And we can talk about ingress, egress, traffic circles, we can talk about anything we wanna talk about. It doesn't take away the fact that these were initially designed for twenty-four estate homes, not seventy-six high-density homes with kids, with traffic, with crime, and lowering property values. So I implore you to take a look at this again, go back to the original spirit and intent of what that twenty-six acres was all about, and deny this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. James Benard, I hope I said that right.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's, uh, James Benard, and I live at three twelve Southwest Forty-Fifth Street. And I have a, a short prepared statement, and maybe a comment after that. Um, my wife and I purchased our lot and subsequent home after about a two-year search. One of the greatest deciding factors regarding the purchase of our property was the assurance of a great neighborhood. In September of twenty, uh, two thousand and six, we believed that was what we were gonna get. Much like the city of Moore has the Moore Vision twenty-twenty, my wife and I also have a vision. Excuse me, getting over a little sore throat. Our vision was to build our dream home in a rural residential area. During my twenty-one years in the military, um, we had the chance to live in many cities and even overseas. So just like the gentleman before me, we had been looking our whole twenty-one years. 'Cause we knew when the day came that we were gonna build our retirement home, we wanted to make sure, hey, is this the right spot? And so we believed that's what we were getting in, in Moore, Oklahoma, where we're at right now. So, throughout my career, I've lived in many, like I said, many cities, many states. We didn't choose Ohio, we didn't choose, choose North Carolina, California, had even had a chance to go to Germany. But we, we decided on Moore, Oklahoma. We found what we were looking for, a good deal, nice quiet, like the gentleman was saying. Now, it is true that the homes to the north of us, to this, to our, to, to the area, are, uh, a lower density. But none of that traffic flow affects my street, Baldwin, or, or any of the others that are on this map right here, okay? All, all that higher-density traffic will never go in, into here unless they build those second sitcoms. So what we're asking, my wife and I, is that you, uh, respectfully, uh, decline amendment number thirty-eight, and, uh, keep that area as a rural resident, uh, rural, um, estate residential. Any questions of me? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Shyla Dyer.
Like the other gentleman, I, um, prepared my thoughts in a short statement, and then also have a couple of thoughts to, uh, address the earnings cons. Um, I'm also, this is a revised version of a letter I.
Can you give your name and address for that?
Oh, I'm sorry, Shyla Blackadder-Dwyer, I'm at six one two Southwest Forty-Fifth Street. Um, and like I said, this is a revised version of a letter I submitted back when this issue was considered in two thousand and eleven. Um, my husband and I are concerned homeowners in the Apple Estates division of the Apples Development. We purchased our home a couple of years ago with the understanding our area was going to be further developed into estate homes with large lots and open space. We felt this was a good investment financially and a great place to spend many happy years. The knowledge, the developer is attempting to change the nature of our neighborhood. The knowledge the developer is attempting to change the nature of our neighborhood greatly disturbs us. There are several factors we ask you to take into consideration as you decide not to allow the developer to make this change. First, the Apples Development, Apples Development is zoned, planned urban development, and the city regulations clearly states that several considerations must be made prior to changing a PUD plan. Not the least of these considerations is to that change is that it must result in a development providing amenities sufficient to address offset and mitigate developmental impacts. Clearly, changing an area from residential estates consisting of large homes on large lots is a significant developmental impact. Families who purchased homes in Apple Estates believe their neighborhood would continue to grow into high-scale residential area, thereby increasing property values. Instead, the developer wishes to decrease the property value of hard-working individuals by taking what would be an upscale neighborhood and instead turning it into a cookie-cutter development with inexpensive homes. This will clearly create significant reduction in value to us as homeowners who bought in expecting this area to continue to, to, continue to develop into a high-value neighborhood. Second, the developer intends to build more cookie-cutter homes, which are already in abundance in this area and even in the Apples Development itself. When the Apples was planned, the developer thought into how to integrate several distinct housing types into a single neighborhood, which would allow families from many different economic situations to benefit from a mutual design. Changes to this plan should be made in light of the goal of conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the municipality. The builder incorporated lower-cost housing with high-end housing into a development such that all could benefit from central amenities such as the park and create economic synergy to increase property value while not decreasing the value of homes at the top end of the scale. This is done by physically dividing the different areas within the neighborhood, allowing this modification within the Estates area to build lower-cost housing would significantly impact property values of the Estates and eliminate the benefits of this original layout. Third, the neighborhood amenities will become crowded. The park areas, entries, and street layouts were designed with certain quantity of traffic planned. The council should be reminded that the purpose of zoning is to lessen congestion in the streets, to secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, to promote health and the general welfare, to provide adequate light and air, to prevent the overcrowding of land, to avoid undue concentration of population, to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements. In the Estates area of the Apples, only one entrance was planned since the developer intended to have low-density housing. If the council changes the nature of this development, the amenities and design of the neighborhood will no longer work to accommodate the increased population density and vehicle traffic. Finally, it is the duty of this council to serve two functions. One, protect the interests of the citizens of the City of Moore, and two, ensure Moore is a good place to conduct business. However, it is not the duty of this council to ensure that every business deal is profitable. When a business enters into a venture to take, it takes a risk knowing it may lose money. It is not this council's duty to protect against such risks. Such is the case here. And to address a couple of other points, the gentleman spoke about high-density housing surrounding this area, and I think the point has been made well tonight that yes, there are areas of higher-density housing, and I think Moore has several of those areas that are good neighborhoods. But part of the reason people purchase in this neighborhood is it's a rare commodity to find an area with large lots such as this. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no one else signed up to speak? Would anyone like to address this? If not, do you want to, do you want to hear from our attorneys?
I think he's available if you have any questions. But we're gonna deny him.
Okay. All right.
Well, I have two simple statements. One is it's been made clear tonight that you're buying from home, creations buyer beware. And the other is I would just like to simply say, I make a motion to deny.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Do you have a-
Second.
A second? We have a motion and a second?
And just before we vote, I just have a couple of quick comments.
Sure.
And, and I do have talked with several of the residents and people who live over there, and as far as their emails, and I really do believe that when they purchased that property, it was sold with the intent to be the lower-density versus the higher-density. I understand that things change, and a developer is, is in this to make money, but it's one of those things, you know, say what you mean and then mean what you say. And I would just agree with Councilman Kraus and that we just need to honor, honor our word. So, also, just an issue that I've, I've worked in Norman, and there are some roundabouts in Norman, and there have been issues as far as getting some of the emergency equipment and slowing the response time in and out of those neighborhoods responding, and in emergencies, minutes, seconds count. So, I don't know that that would be appropriate, and just creating higher density, the people at risk, maybe they'll never need an ambulance, maybe their house will never catch on fire. But if it does, we need to ensure that we're doing everything we can to keep it safe.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a couple of comments. First, what I'm hearing from a lot of the folks that talked tonight is that they have been made certain promises. I don't know if those promises are expressed or implied, but they caused me concern as to, the promises of low-density or being able to enjoy an area that's of low-density. And the other thing I've heard is that I've heard that there is a, if, at least a perceived impact on people's property values. One, certainly one question I had was, has there been a study on that? And that will a, a high-density or higher-density neighborhood actually affect your property values significantly in order to devalue your investment? So, viewing that, I, I have to, or hearing that, I have to consider the wisdom of this particular project.
Okay, thanks. Ebaes? We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote to deny?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item is denied. Item number four is Consider the Preliminary Platte for Apple Valley, Section Nine, located in the southwest quarter of Section Thirty-Six, Township Ten North, Range Three West, being south of Southwest Thirty-Fourth Street and west of Broadway Avenue. Application by Shaw's Investment Group Incorporated. Planning Commission recommended denial of this item. Eight-zero. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to deny.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item is denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, citizens, for coming up.
I'll give them a couple of minutes.
Sooner Road and Indian Hills Road, and because Sooner Road is a state highway, any curb cuts onto Sooner will be approved by ODOT. There is no flood plane located on this property, and detention will be required. Because this property is not within the city limits currently, the comp plan must be amended to include this property. The proposed use of a convenience store with gas pumps does fall under the medium commercial designation, land use designation. Being located on a corner of two arterial roadways, the medium commercial land use, proposed land use does follow the established patterns of reserving corners for commercial areas that our comp plan has already established. Staff does recommend approval of this application. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Just one quick regarding the traffic, and it's kind of an interesting intersection, part of it's Norman, part of it's Moore, part of it's unincorporated area, and just trying to think ahead if there were ever to be any kind of traffic improvements there such as lights, which I could really see that happening. How does that work?
Funny that you should ask that. We have already been in discussions with ODOT and Norman, because Norman's the other player in the scenario. And there can be an agreement, would be a three-way agreement where cost sharing would be had, and it would be prorated based upon how, what the, each of the entity actually owns of that intersection, which we own the least amount. However, all of the three entities would have to agree to fund that improvement. We have been in discussions with Norman about this. They have agreed that a traffic light at Indian Hills and Sooner would probably be a good idea, especially in the future. However, their funding is not, they don't have any funding designated for that at that ti, at this time. So, we are keeping everyone's phone numbers, and we will be revisiting this in the future.
Okay. Yeah, I believe this might can be considered for an ACOG project as far as an emergency operation. It falls kind of in that, but not quite.
Right, yes. ACOG would be an option for certain.
All right, thank you. So, do we need a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
All right. Second? Thanks. Okay, before we do that, I do have one guy signed up here, Rob Griffin. Would you like to speak on the issue?
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Rob Griffin, and I live at forty-one oh eight Southwest Fortieth and Moore. And of course, it's in Belmar North, I, so I believe that even though it's, or they tell us it's in Moore, so even though I have a Norman address, my mail comes through Norman. But what I want to talk to you today is the problem with the curbing. What's, what's going on is that there are several houses that are being built, and when, when Belmar North was made, it was the street and then the curbing, and as they built a house, they cut the curbing out and then they put the driveway. Okay, well, what one developer, what one housing builder is doing is when he builds a curb, the curb from the driveway do not meet with the curb in the, on the road, okay, on the, on the street. So, in other words, the curb comes from the driveway, and here's the curb in the street, and they run parallel. They don't touch. And it really, it looks, it looks very terrible. It looks bad. It looks terrible. And, you know, talking to several builders and talking to some concrete people, you know, they tell me that, you know, they said, that guy's saving about two-hundred-and-fifty bucks. You know, the, the housing, the, the people that are buying the house aren't getting the two-hundred-and-fifty, the city's not getting two-hundred-and-fifty. You know, to me, it's not worth it. You know, all they're doing is they're taking the curb, they're taking a big saw, and they're cutting the curb out with a big saw, and that's exactly what it looks like. You know, it looks kind of like a playhouse where they cut out with a, a big piece of on the curb. Took that out and then brought the curb back from the, from the driveway and ran it parallel. Okay, it, it looks absolutely terrible. I, I hope, and the reason I'm here is I would certainly like a moratorium on that until you guys can look at that. I don't see a reason to continue to, you know, build curbing like that. It looks terrible, it looks cheap. You know, I, it's, it's just something that I think that you guys need to know about and to look at. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll definitely send somebody out there tomorrow to take a look at it, 'cause I've not ever heard of that being done like that before.
Me either.
Yeah, well, I asked too. I don't know of any place in the United States that does curbing like that. Obviously, somebody must. They didn't just come up with that idea. You know, I was told that an addition, I was told that an addition on Sunny Lane, supposedly there's a house that has that same curbing, but I never could find it.
Okay. So, really, you got the curb right above the driveway, right above the driving surface.
Well, all I can do is tell you again, in other words-
Like, here's the curb, and they're sawing it right here, sixth, right there, the driving surface.
Yeah, they're, right on the, on the curbing from, from the street, they're cutting it at a forty-five, a forty-five-degree angle on either side, right? And then they bring the curbing from the driveway and run it parallel. It's just like this. They don't, they don't, they don't, you know, in other words, they don't meet.
We'll definitely look at it. It sounds to me like they're protecting the integrity of that gutter section that drains the water off of the street. You know, because when you saw that, they gutter, you don't get proper compaction, and that's where all these ponds occur, here, the driveway up and down, which is pretty, I don't know that that's the case.
Yeah.
That's what it sounds like.
Well, yeah, well, the, the driveway on those houses, you know, runs about probably thirty degrees, so I don't know what, you know, what pond it would be, you know.
But part of that road is that gutter section that carries the water on these sides.
Right, and I, and-
Where the stormwater-
Right, and I, I don't, you know, and I don't know that, but all I know is it looks really terrible.
It looks poor.
And certainly would like to stop that. I don't think it's a very good idea, it doesn't look good.
Do you happen to know an address of one off the top of your head?
Right, it's, and I, I, well, Robert gave you the wrong address. It's forty-one oh nine is the address of one of them.
And what, on what street, Ian? What street? Which street?
Forty, Southeast Fortieth.
Forty is, Southeast Fortieth, okay. Forty-one oh nine, okay.
Forty-one oh nine, Southeast Fortieth, in Belmar North. I guess you-
Well, we'll try and find an answer as to why, or if there's any reason or what have you, but-
Okay, I, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing it out. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the ordinance. Would you call for the vote if there's no other discussion?
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number six is Consider Moore Vision Twenty Twenty Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number Thirty-seven, located in the southeast quarter of Section Thirty-two, Township Ten North, Range Two West, being north of Indian Hills Road and west of Sooner Road from rural residential to medium commercial. Application by Cabo Crossing Enterprises, LLC. Planning Commission recommended approval, six-zero. Now, Randy, I have a question for you. How come the Planning Commission heard an item on a piece of property that is not in the City of Moore?
Being a recommending body, they can listen to any of those items, and then-
So, that's legal? We can proceed? Okay, just making sure. All right, thank you. Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? We know what this is gonna be?
It'll be a gas station, but we don't know-
What kind of answer?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item seven is Consider Rezoning Application, RZ eight-nine-nine, located in the southeast quarter of Section Thirty-two, Township Ten North, Range Two West, being north of Indian Hills Road and west of Sooner Road from May one Rural Agricultural District to C-three General Commercial District, and Approve Ordinance Number Seven Four Five dash one-three. Application by Cabo Crossing Enterprises, LLC. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item, six-zero.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second?
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. I have a note here on Items Eight, Nine, and Ten from Ross Morris. On behalf of my client, we wish to withdraw the above referenced project from council consideration. We are reworking some of the aspects of the site, and we resubmit to the city at a later time. So, Items Eight, Nine, and Ten, do we have a tabling motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to table.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Do we have a second?
Yes. Scott did.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item is tabled. Item number eleven is Consider Approval of a Right-Away Public Utility and Encroachment Agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for Sidewalk Installation on the South Side of Northwest Twelfth Street between Santa Fe Avenue and Grace Point Drive, also known as STP dash one-one-four-B, three-oh-four-A-G, job number two-nine-oh-one-two-oh-four.
Mayor and council, this is a, um, right-of-way agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for a sidewalk project that was funded or is being funded through, um, ACOG's sidewalk funds. ACOG does provide up to two hundred thousand dollars of, uh, of funding for sidewalk projects, and that's one hundred percent funding with no city match required. Uh, this particular sidewalk is, uh, planned on going on Northwest Twelve Street from Santa Fe to Grace Point Drive, and that will be on the south side of the road only. Uh, the estimated cost is two hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. Uh, but again, ACOG will provide the funding for up to two hundred thousand dollars of that. We are anticipating a September bid letting, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I would like to say thank you to Kathy when she was on ACOG, where she helped get this, so, we appreciate it. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Alright, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? We're getting lots of sidewalks, it looks really good. Would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavaner?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number twelve is consider approval of two contracts with traffic engineering consultants for engineering services for street striping of nine miles of arterial roadway and fifteen intersections in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, and engineering services for street striping of seven miles of arterial roadway and eleven intersections in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, fifty dollars.
Mayor and council, uh, these are two separate ACOG projects. We have phase one, which will happen in twenty-fourteen, uh, and that is estimated cost of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars, uh, but it will be funded one hundred percent through ACOG funding. Uh, phase two is in twenty-fifteen and its estimated cost is one hundred and forty-five thousand and fifty dollars. Again, it'll be funded one hundred percent through, um, ACOG safety funding. Uh, what you're approving tonight is, uh, two, or I guess it's really one engineering contract for the, uh, engineering services to create plans for both of these projects. Since they are, uh, funded through ODOT, they do have to go through engineering reviews that require plans to be made. Uh, and this is part of a four to five-year plan that we are wanting to get through ACOG, uh, which is, uh, to put our streets on a regular, uh, street striping schedule, so we will have freshly striped streets all the time. And I think that I gave you a, uh, map that's color-coded, um, so you can see which ones are scheduled for twenty-fourteen and twenty-fifteen. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a comment, doesn't it seem strange to anybody else, we have to pay sixty-six thousand dollars to, from an in, to an engineer to put the stripe down the middle of the road? I mean, seriously, that's the stupidest thing.
Have to admit, I was wondering the same thing.
Okay.
It is amazing how much it is, just to paint them.
It is, and I would say it's not just paint, it's specially formulated thermal plastic.
Well, that's not for the paint, that's, this is just for the engineering services. We're talking about the engineer to say, "Word of paint." Yeah, this is...
The engineering is for intersections that have a lot of detail to it, as far as crosswalks and, and whatnot.
Bet we could find twenty kids to do it for half of that.
I wouldn't want to see it when it was done.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Alright, thank you, thank you both. We have a motion in a second, would you call for the vote, please, if there's no other comment?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavaner?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number thirteen is consider approval of a contract with the Cleveland County Rebuilding Together in the amount of six thousand dollars to be used for home repair and weatherproofing of seven low-income homes.
Just want to introduce very quickly, Jared Jacobowski, he is a new member of the community development department, and he is, uh, you'll be seeing him with, uh, CBG items and also things like rebuilding together, so...
Mayor and council, Cleveland County Rebuilding Together, formerly known as Christmas in April, believes that everyone deserves to live in a safe and healthy home, to focus. The focus provides critical repairs and weatherproofing upgrades to low-income homes at no cost to the recipients. Rebuilding Together spends approximately one thousand dollars per home on supplies. This year, thirteen homes in Cleveland County were selected, seven of the homes were located in Moore. The city generally donates three thousand dollars, but with the increase in home, homes beginning, being in the city of Moore, we're requesting six thousand dollars. At this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is that the only, is that the full number of applications that we had for Moore?
Um, total applications for, I don't know, total applications for Cleveland County was about twenty-five, and now it's narrowed down to thirteen.
Okay. Cause I was thinking, if we, if we had some more, we could probably fund them.
I would, I would have to give, go through the applications again.
Okay, cause that's pretty cheap to fix a bunch of houses.
Right, they've gotta have work crews to do it, though, sometimes is the, pulled up as far as work crews.
This year, we were limited, we had a, a lot of applications, but not very many volunteer crews.
Really? Okay. Do you know what a thousand dollars gets, I mean, as far as supplies go, I'm assuming paint? Does it take care of doors if needed, or...
Yeah, weather stripping, uh, windows and, um, we, uh, enclosed a patio, there was some roof repairs, um, painting the interior, exterior, there was some bath refinishes to make it handicap accessible for an elderly female, um, things of that nature.
Does it... I was just thinking, if we spend sixty-six thousand dollars to tell us where to put the paint line in the middle of the road, we could at least fix up some poor people's houses.
I agree. Is a thousand sufficient per home, I mean, does that normally...
Normally, yes, there were some that went over that, but...
It's not a program to do major remodeling, it's just a program to do basically minor remodeling, but also to make the house more livable and easier for folks to move about in, and that's what it's...
Where, where are we drawing labor force from?
Volunteers.
Volunteers.
Volunteer organizations, groups, banks, anybody that, any entity that wanted to do it, I'm sure could, could get a house and could do it.
I was just looking at some of our, First Baptist Church, Wagner's Heat and Air, uh, University of Oklahoma, Forest Lumber.
Okay. Create a back-up report and tell us if there's more.
Okay, I will do that.
We had a city crew that did it, uh, city employees, a few years ago, and then they began to get more and more volunteer crews from businesses around. We kind of laid back, but...
Last year was the exact opposite, they had a lot of volunteer groups and not enough homes, but this year is the opposite, okay?
Yeah.
Their area's onto the board down there, so, on the board at this time...
Who is?
Jared.
Oh, I used to be on that board, good luck.
Thank you.
We still do provide, I believe, the hallway of any trash or anything like that at all of the homes here in town through the Terminator Service. We do do that as well.
Okay, it's a great board, you'll like it.
Yes.
It's very...
I make a motion to approve.
Alright, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavaner?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number fourteen is consider awarding RFP number one-two-one-three dash zero-zero-three, Harmley Park Playground to ACS Playground Adventures Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, items fourteen and fifteen are related to the new park at Twelfth and Janeway, Harmley Park. Uh, each of these items will be funded with, uh, the quarter cent sales tax approved by voters in November. Uh, city staff worked with the teachers, administrators, and students at Kelly Elementary, um, in December to develop a theme for the, the playground in the park, and so, uh, we presented three options to the students. Uh, they voted, uh, they, the winning theme was a forest-themed playground and splash pad. That's a tough theme, but, uh, we think that the designers for both the playground and the splash pad did a real good job with the, uh, with the theme. Uh, we solicited proposals for the playground in January, we, uh, we received fifteen proposals from eight different companies. Uh, we put together a committee made up of staff, uh, city staff, Parks Board members, Sid Porter, and, uh, we developed a set of criteria to rank the proposals. You'll notice in the rendering, and I have colorized versions of those renderings if you like them, uh, but you'll see shade, park benches, uh, and those are all rated very high when we went through our master plan process several months back. Based upon the criteria, the committee recommends that, uh, the proposal, or the, the playground be awarded to ACS Playground Adventures in the amount of one-twenty-three, seven-fifty. Uh, the budget for this project was a hundred and thirty-five, so we came in a little under budget, so, with that, I'll be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Alright, thank you.
Tom, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Todd, I got a quick, is, uh, the one-twenty-three, does that cover everything in the rendering?
Yes, yes, that's a turnkey install everything, yes.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavaner?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries, this is nice, because this is the only park they've had over there since the YMCA was there a jillion years ago.
Yes, sir.
Item number fifteen is consider awarding RFP number one-two-one-three dash zero-zero-two, Harmley Park Spray Park to Benchmark Enterprises LLC in the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Uh, again, mayor, this is, uh, this is a forest-themed splash pad. We solicited proposals from, uh, splash pad companies, manufacturers, we received five from four separate companies. We went through the same process, put together a committee made up of staff members, two park board members at this time, Janie Mylum and Kelly Maddox. You'll notice shade again, there's four shade structures, so just in these two, uh, proposals, we'll have eight shade structures out there in the park. Um, based upon the criteria, uh, the committee recommends that the proposal be awarded to Benchmark Enterprises LLC in the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand, that was the budgeted amount for the splash pad. Uh, a couple of things I'll bring to your attention, uh, this splash pad will be one of the largest in the metro area. Oklahoma City has fourteen, this is larger than any of those, it's larger than anything Norman has. This is a destination splash pad, so we think it'll be a lot of traffic. Uh, it matches the theme wonderfully, there's a lot of interactive features for the kiddos. Uh, it's divided up into three bays for youngsters, toddlers, up to, uh, fifteen, sixteen-year-olds. So, it, it'll be a really nice feature. The other thing that I'd bring to your attention, uh, we estimate that there'll be about forty-five thousand gallons per day of usage through this. Uh, the water will be taken to the water feature, which will be, uh, it's a drainage channel, it's dammed up. Uh, the water will be taken there and will reuse that water to irrigate the, the, the park itself, so that's something unique. Um, and that will start work, uh, here very soon, so, if the weather cooperates and the good Lord's willing, hopefully, we'll get some play value out of this this summer, but, uh, we'll see how that goes. But ideally, that's the, the timeframe that we like to get this done, is late summer if we can, so, with that, I'll be happy to take...
For all of it, late summer, it'd be open, it probably wouldn't be too late to open this year, but the park would be usable?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Talk quick question, in terms of like, real bout, real, real bad drought situations and stuff, how will spray parks and stuff be impacted by drought situations for us?
It really depends on the city, uh, you know, we've looked at that, uh, what a lot of cities do is just shut theirs down. Uh, some reduce the, the timeframe that you can use them, maybe instead from noon to eight or nine, you might do it just in the evening or something like that. So, cities tackle it very, uh, various ways.
Just as a second part of that, answer to that question, the city of Oklahoma City, I believe, last week approved some new measures with regard to additional restrictions for outdoor usage of water, depending on the lake levels of their lakes. So, right now, they are and we are just under the traditional hot even, but it is possible later in the year, depending on how the drought goes or no, that we will have to institute additional restrictions. Exactly how it would affect this, I, I don't know at this point, but, but, just, we, we are facing that potentially. Uh, but the drought situation has improved significantly, the, um, I talked to, by email, Marshall Slaughter today, who's the director of utilities for Oklahoma City, and right now, they're above the threshold for their, all of their lakes to do anything other than, uh, traditional hot even that we're doing now. And if we get a little bit more water, uh, raining along the way, then, then we'll be in pretty good shape.
Something to kind of, kind of go in line with us a little bit, I talked to Councilman Cavaner about this last meeting, but, uh, Edmund recently, uh, enacted some, uh, regulations of, about, uh, the water sprinklers, about having sensors on them, requiring them to have the sensors. It might be something we might want to look into, that regardless of when we have a lot of water or not, you know, putting sensors on there to where they, you know, if it's raining outside, your, your water sprinkler's not running too, you know, so... But I know Edmund did that, so I don't know if it's something you might want to look into, too.
Well, uh, to go on with that, my understanding is most of the new, new control boxes have that availability, so it's not even an additional expense to require that to be done, so...
It probably passed it for all new systems, I assume.
Right, I think so, I think you're right, yeah.
Difficult to go back, that'd be difficult.
Yeah, 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 I think you're right, I think so.
But basically, all it does is if it's raining, it shut, the system doesn't come on, so...
Yeah, you'd hope so. That's the concept.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, do we have a motion on this?
Make a motion to approve.
Alright, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, both. We have a motion in a second? Any other discussion? Todd, I like your enthusiasm. It's contagious, the Parks Board's all excited about all these projects, they'll, they'll talk to me about it, it's like, let's go. With that being said, would you call for the vote?
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavaner?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item sixteen is considering it deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice mayor.
I'd like to nominate Robert Kraus.
Second.
Alright, thank you, thank you, both. We have a motion in a second, would you call for the vote?
Terry Cavaner?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
And Glenn Lewis?
Yes, I voted twice, that's okay. Congratulations, Robert.
Yes, Robert, it's great, you'll love it.
Item number seventeen is considering it deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a member and alternate to serve the, on the ACOG Board of Directors, uh, Intermodal Transportation Policy Committee, the Garber Wellington Policy Committee, and the nine-one-one Association Board of Directors.
I'd like to nominate Mark Ham.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, we have a mo, a motion and a second for Mark Ham. As the ACOG board member, do we have a, a motion or a nomination for the alternate?
I'd like to nominate Jason Blair as the alternate.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for both candidates, would you please call for the vote?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavaner?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Item carries.
I just wanted to make double sure, Mark, and these meetings are during the day, one, once a month, so, so, I'm sure you knew.
Okay, this time we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item eighteen is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held April fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Item B is declare a nineteen, excuse me, nineteen eighty-five Toyota forklift model number two-FBE-one-zero with a three-thousand-pound capacity of surplus to be traded in on purchase of a new six-thousand-pound capacity forklift of the utilities, V O A Water. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen in the amount of two million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars, fifty-one cents.
Make a motion to approve.
Alright, thank you, thank you both. Excuse me. We have a motion in a second, would you call for the vote, if there's no other questions or comments?
Robert Kraus?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavaner?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, item nineteen is considering it deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice chair of the trust. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Didn't you say Robert, didn't?
Yeah, that, it's the same as the vice mayor, use that.
Okay, I'd nominate Robert.
Alright, thank you.
Second.
Alright, thank you. Uh, would you call for the vote, please, if there's no other discussion or nominations?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Scott Singer?
Yes.
Terry Cavaner?
Yes.
Yes.
David Roberts, I'm sorry. Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number twenty is considering it deemed appropriate, except nominations and elect a secretary of the trust.
I would like to nominate David Roberts.
All right, thank you.
I'd second that.
All right. That's the easiest job of the bunch. You gotta sign a hundred.
Oh, you just sign your name.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item twenty-one is consider approval of an agreement with Controlled Benefit Resources for the third-party administration services for workers' compensation and general liability claims for three years.
Mayor and trustees, Consolidated Benefits Resources has been our third-party administrators for our workers' compensation and general liability claims for the last three years. They're currently also submitting data for the Medicare Section one-eleven reporting, which is something that we're required to do now on a lot of the bigger settlements. They've offered to renew our agreement with a hundred dollar per month increase. Staff believes that this is a reasonable increase and recommends that we renew our agreement with Consolidated Benefits Resources for three years.
So, you're happy with them?
Yes, very happy with them. They were, three years ago, we went out for bids, and they were the low bid, and they've been really good to work with and done a really good job.
Good. Okay, do we have a motion?
Salute.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, we have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item twenty-two is consider the purchase of four hundred and twenty-five Polycarts at a total cost of twenty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars, twenty-five cents from, I guess that's Toder Corporation.
Yes, Mayor and Council, it's just we've been biffing this company for the last four or five times, and we want to continue using their product, and they are the lowest bid and best bid, so.
Okay.
How are the Polycarts, Polycarts holding up?
Well, we have some in the field now that were first put in service in two thousand. So, those are starting to come in now, so that's why we're having to replace these a little quicker than we normally do.
They get pretty beat up, though.
Yes, yeah, they're wearing out, yeah.
All right.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion on these items?
Do you think we're gonna start getting a lot more of these coming in, I guess?
Yeah, this is the third order we've done this fiscal year. We usually do two, and we went ahead and budgeted this time for.
Okay. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item twenty-three is the consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held April fifteenth, two thousand thirteen. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures FY two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen in the amount of three hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars, thirty-six cents.
We approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Everybody get their claims questions answered, or any notes or changes to the minutes? If so, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number twenty-four is consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice chair of the Moore Risk Management Board.
We'd nominate Robert Kraus.
All right.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other nominations? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item twenty-five is considered deemed appropriate, except nominations and elect a secretary of the Moore Risk Management Board.
I'd nominate Scott Singer.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number twenty-six is new business. Item A is Citizens Forum for Items, not on the agenda. We have a couple people signed up. Kenneth Jura, Dreama. I hope I said that right. Well, that's it, actually. Anybody else want to speak? If not, item B is items from the city council or trustees.
Twelfth Street's coming right along. Almost done, I guess. Okay.
The owner of ATAC today, and if the weather cooperates, will we lay concrete in the next week? I license in from the west end sunrise, and should be, well, almost to the highway. We can't get it up on the highway without approval, but they're planning on moving a light-out machine in the mid-part, actually. Great.
Would you like to do ribbon cutting?
Well, we might need to. Or riot control. We'll probably have to start on the other side again. It's been so long. Yeah.
All right.
I've got just a quick comment, just a, I guess, a clarification of something I said last week, when several of us have been down to the animal shelter and we're pleased with what we saw. Let me clarify that in the fact that we're pleased with what the management has done, with what they've got to work with. I think we're all in agreement. We need to spend some money down there. I just wanted to clarify that statement.
We know what you meant.
Yeah.
It needs some sod pretty bad, I think, but that's number one, probably. Okay. Any items from the city manager or trust manager?
Yes, sir. First, Todd, if you'll come up and just give them a, give the public and the council briefly what's gonna be happening this week.
Thank you, Mr. Ede. A month or so ago, council approved the contract with our design team for Central Moore Park. That process is, we're just getting it going. We've put together, we've assembled a stakeholder group, we're calling it. It's made up, it's a diverse group. It's made up of business people, youths, seniors, representatives from the faith community, city staff, Parks Board members, some council members, obviously. And it's a group that we want to be a sounding board for the process. We want them to give input about the process, about all the components that will go down there. So, we're having our first meeting with that group this Wednesday at the community center. And then Thursday evening, we're having a public forum from six-thirty to eight. And what the, both those meetings will be very similar. There'll be a presentation about the site. It's opportunities, it's challenges, a little bit of history, sort of how we got to where we're at. We'll talk about the major components. What ideas do the design team have for those major components? It's not, it's a big picture group, is what I'm trying to say. We're not gonna be picking out wall colors and carpet samples, those kinds of things. It's a big strategic group. And then we'll do the same thing with the public Thursday evening. And it's not a one-and-done group. We're not gonna just meet once. It's gonna be an ongoing process. We'll share a timetable with the group and the schedule and all that. From talking to the design team, you know, if everything goes according to plan, and we know how plans are sometimes, but we could, you know, see dirt work really happening later this year, maybe some construction starting about this time next year. So, this group, the stakeholder group, these public forums will be a critical part of this process over the next year or so. So, we're just getting it started. But we'd love for the public to be there Thursday evening at the community center from six-thirty to eight.
What time is the meeting on Wednesday?
It's from noon to two at the community center. And then we'll also be meeting with the department heads later that same day to inform them and get their thoughts as well, so.
All right, sounds good.
Without having been said, Thursday evening, there's an opportunity for service for you all. Friday evening is gonna be the first leg of our retreat at five-thirty. Five-thirty to about eight-thirty-ish at Fire Station Number One. We're gonna kind of use that as a working dinner to have you all give us some ideas as to what issues are pressing with regard to the discussion that we'll have Saturday with the various department heads and kind of looking towards the future in various departments or in various functions as to what you all want to see happen over the next five years.
Number one's the news station, right, over behind Home Depot, correct?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Twenty-four hundred.
Used to be on main.
Critical, but it's behind Home Depot. And then Saturday at eight-thirty, eight o'clock for polite breakfast, eight-thirty at the chamber office for the actual retreat part of this, where we'll be spending the day talking about various issues in the future and hearing some ideas from the department heads, or some of the department heads at least, on what's happening. We also need to have a budget study session with the group. I'd like to have that next Monday night, but I realize we're got a lot going here, but we need to get on with that. We typically have it a little earlier than that in past years, but with things going on in my life and all, we're a little bit behind, but we're not behind too badly. But we need to go ahead and have a budget study session, an official budget study session. I'll be meeting with all of you all individually through this week. I think I've contacted everybody, but so it's next Monday evening, I guess. Is that okay?
It's good as any.
We, about six-thirty then, is that okay?
Perfect.
All right, we'll put out a notice on that, of course, at six-thirty here upstairs.
Have you talked to everybody else about, I can, you and I sit down.
I've got everybody scheduled to come in, except for Robert, and I plan to talk to him in a minute.
Okay.
For the rest of this week, to get everybody in to talk about it. Yes, I'm sorry. And we did have the closings on all three of the parcels that we bought over here last week, so those are all closed. We now own almost sixty acres over there that the park will be. And I can tell you, I was at all the closings, and I met all of the property owners involved, and two of those groups are old-time Moore families, and they've had opportunities, all of the property owners over there have had many opportunities to sell the property for other uses, but somehow or another, I don't know whether they knew or what, but had a premonition, I'm not sure, but we're all waiting really for the right thing to come along, and all of them, without exception, so they were very happy that the city got this property and very happy about what we've got proposed over there. So, we really were very fortunate to have cooperative, now we pay them, of course, but very cooperative landowners who want to see and support what we're doing here. So, that was gratifying. I think that's all I have at this point, Mayor.
Okay. One other note, congratulations on getting married.
Thank you.
And going to Hawaii on honeymoon and all that. We're glad you're back.
Thank you.
And that's why the long agenda tonight, he put it all off until he got back.
May be, may be.
Yeah, we know. Okay. Item twenty-seven is executive session. Section three oh seven, Title twenty-five, Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet in executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet in executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss, consider it deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending claim on behalf of Gary Patterson, deceased, and Melody Patterson, personal representative of the estate of Gary Patterson, deceased, against the city of Moore, and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore, as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash four. Item B, discuss, consider, and if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending claim by Ernest Robinson against the city of Moore, and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore, as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash four. Do we have a motion to convene to executive session?
Some moves.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, we're now adjourned to executive sessions.
Robert Kraus. Jason Blair.
Here.
Scott Singer.
Here.
Terry Cavanagh.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. On item A, discuss, consider, and deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending claim on behalf of Gary Patterson, deceased, and Melody Patterson, personal representative of the estate of Gary Patterson, deceased, against the city of Moore, and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take actions as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore, as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash four. Do we have a motion?
A motion to deny.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Would you call for the vote on that? We have a motion in a second.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, motion is denied. On item B, discuss, consider, and deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action against pending claim by Ernest Robinson against the city of Moore, and authorization for legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city of Moore, as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma statutes three oh seven B dash four.
Motion to deny.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have motion and a second to deny the claim. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item is denied. Item twenty-eight is adjournment.
So, move.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We're adjourned.
Scott Singer. Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, we are adjourned now.
Where are you going?[1785.43]